So this doesn't matter?
I don't believe it. Usually that works, but I don't know if I said no right.
Oh, okay, I see. So this should be stopped.
It's stopped. It should, but it wasn't working earlier.
It's like it's stopped before.
It's will have to use a much deeper side. Slide that thing. There you go. Now it's re-.
It's on all. It's on the other way. It's on the other. Probably put everything in the.
He's got that.
Well.
Can't leave drop the.
It's on that link.
There's six hundred horses.
Okay. As I call, we need to order. Sign with its twelve. There it is. Twelve thirty-four. The governing board of the Lake Mahawee Valley Fire District meeting in regular session this twenty-fifth day of July two thousand nineteen at twelve thirty-four P M. More available to go into executive session on any agenda item pursuant to A R S thirty-eight four thirty-one oh three, A through B for local advice of the district's attorney on matters of certain laws and agenda later. All on toppings and any variables thereto will be subject to more consideration discussion approval or other action. All items are set for possible action. So, let's see. Roll call.
Joe Campbell.
Larry Cannon.
Ellen Ray Bowden.
Charlotte Kipfer.
And the records show that Chairperson Deborah Cass is absent. That's an excused absence. But it makes a difference. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we've added a moment of silence. We need to have the board approve that and action. I think you. We're going to honor or observe a moment of silence to honor those who serve our country and the then public safety and to those we've lost. Item four approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I made a motion that we approve the minutes on our consent agenda A through E.
Give me a second.
I made a motion to approve all the minutes on the consent agenda, A through E. No one has any changes to those minutes.
I'll second that.
Second. All the paper?
Yay. Joe Campbell. Larry Cannon. Yay.
Ellen Ray Bowden, yay.
Charlotte Kipfer, yay.
Motion to pass. Minutes are June fourth, special minutes. Executive minutes are June fourth, special minutes, June thirteenth. Executive minutes are June twenty-fourth and record minutes are June twenty-fourth. We're all approved. Item five, reports. How did you?
For June, July, the last month we had.
You speak good loud, so they can.
Yeah. Glad to report that we had no A and R transports recovered all our calls. Chief callouts after hours was eight for the month. Total transports thirty-nine. Medical refusals was six. Fourteen fire calls. Four service calls. From the service calls I want to put on there, that's like pest abatements or changing batteries and smoke detectors. We had four of those. Four false alarm calls. Total calls for the month was seventy-six. Highway ninety-three calls was eleven. That's what our call written down for the last month. Meetings, conferences, and trainings that I wanted to keep the board up to date with what schedule I have for the month and what's going on the next month. June twenty-seventh, we did Meet the Chief in Meview. We had a good turnout there. We did have, I think, between, I think it was thirty and forty-five people there. No one was there with us, except Larry. Overall, it went good. There was some, a little bit of negativity, but not much. A lot of people are understanding what we're trying to do up there. Overall, it went pretty good. July ninth, attended burn review. July tenth, eleven, I attended the AFTA convention meeting conference. July twenty-third was heat-related explosion training. Signed up for that for WebEx. They sent us the wrong time. They sent us eastern time. And so it was at six A M in the morning. But so that one was, that was a WebEx training. We didn't get that. Tomorrow, July twenty-sixth, I'm attending air relap training for paramedic skills and Kinga Regional Medical. July thirtieth, we, for all medics in this area of the base hospital, is required in P H T L S pre-hospital trauma life support training. I'm going to that July thirtieth. July thirty-first is an online training that D P S is putting on for when we hire employees and do their fingerprint backgrounds. How to go through those reports when we get them back. It's required for us to get the fingerprint and all that. So, during that training, the thirty-first. And August first, there was a training in Norfolk at the Aquarius for, which we have a lot of pipelines in our area. May not go straight through here, but it's a core program, pipeline training for explosions for pipeline or paint colors, water, gas, natural gas, propane. So, I'm attending that training on this first. District properties, we got nothing new to report. I take that back. We did have a guy approach us for attitude community service. So he did go to Station Forty-two and he did a lot of the meeting in Clearo at Station Forty-two in between the bay and trailer. He did a lot of clean up there. District vehicles and apparatus, command service vehicles, airline service. I want to thank Scott and Phyllis who went out to Texas and bringing it back for us. Water tender four thirty-eight is mostly known Lewis tire on the way to a structure fire. So it was not used during the fire. We did end up putting two front tires in hand and put a wheel on that. Get his back in service up and going. And water tender four eighteen, we've been having a problem with them leaking with the packing in the pump in there. Well, it decided to just go out the other day. And I made the decision that we needed that water tender due to the fire season. We get contact board members on that because it was an emergency and we had the opportunity to put a new pump in that. At a very discount. So, that is up and going. All our vehicles are up and going for the fire season. We have had a lot of brush fires around here in the last three weeks. I believe we've had twelve. We've had one major structure fire that we had. All our volunteers, I thank all them, they were on that fire. It was a very long hot day and all of them stuck it out with us all day long to get that fire under control. We did save the house. We, the barn was burned to the ground. We did save the house and it was, it led to a lot of tender grass fire behind. We were able to cut that off and forest, Arizona forest, we showed up and continued that. But we did save the house there. Projects we got going in the works. I'm still getting everything together for the wildland program. I'm contacting engine bosses to be honest, we can get our truck now. The brush truck, as you know, on that, we have the command vehicles staying in district and it has been a great use on all these structure fires. Volunteers have been taking it out to, for these fires and it works great for us, staying in district. And we're continually working on grants. We're still waiting on. The one we wrote, that I wrote with the previous chief last year, I got word that they are going to start awarding in August. So by the end of August, middle of September, we should know where we're at with that grant. And that was for the new tactical water tender. So that was a three hundred eighty thousand dollar grant. So they're going to start awarding those. Let's see. We also did place ads for full-time firefighters. Paramedics asked through AFTA, our website, and we're working on loading it up to the R F D Facebook page. It's, it's being created. We've had some roadblocks in the middle of this. Karen's been coming in. She's, she's doing this. There's a lot of roadblocks we've set up there, Facebook page with the board, but it is in the works.
I, I've tried to set it up a couple of different times using email addresses I created since before it, media related. And Facebook has shut me down. So, I'm, I'm, I'm working on it.
Karen was able to secure us a scholarship for two attendees in the amount of five hundred dollars for Arizona State Fire School. I know in the past four or five years here, no one has been able to attend due to funds. She was able to get these. We are, we pay upfront and then the Arizona Fire School pays us the five hundred scholarship back for the classes and the hotel. So we are sending two of our full-timers, Mike Pedway and Chris Heinz, will be going to Fire School. She's going, Karen's going to register each one in a logic form. This takes place September fourth through the eighth. Employees will be reminded and I am having them sign a document, reminding that they are attending a training function and they represent the department and to do this professionally. As I mentioned before, Verizon is going to be our cellular service provider. We may go through that. We talked with the rep from Verizon. He got everything set up. We should be receiving the phone within next week. So that is set up and we'll have that. So our current suppression staffing, which are pretty good right now. We have three P O C E M T firefighters. Right now we have fourteen P O C paramedics and we did hire two full-time E M T firefighters. So we do, we have three full-time firefighter E M Ts to cover each.
You know all the secrets here. What's P O C?
Paid on call. They're not.
It is C E P S.
C E P is Certified Emergency Paramedic.
That's what I thought kind of motivation.
So continued evaluation of coverage, Meview Station will be performed for the citizens in Meview. I know for the, did I give you Charlotte the company of August schedule?
No.
It was June and July.
I just have July.
Um, August, I wasn't quite finished with, but I believe in Meview for August, we're covering twenty-one days right now. So, we're, it's, Meview's a work in progress to get it staffed and it's, it's gradually getting better. So. We did set a Meet the Chief in Dolan Springs. It's scheduled for eighth, August sixteenth, two thousand nineteen at Station Forty-one from twelve to two. Pretty much same as we did Meview, so people can know that I'm here. A lot of people in Dolan are, end up coming to the station and seeing someone there now. But for those that haven't met me or have any questions, we're doing that in Dolan. Any donations, we're putting out to any donations of food, drinks, or other items are welcome. We appreciate it. We did do some talking and I, I know the previous administration chief did not do a lot of things to get us out there. And I will bring up this trophy sitting here to my right. We got invited on July fourth to go to Kinga Fairgrounds to bring an engine down, a guarantee out there and compete in a water, water kick fight. We competed with the best, I'll tell you that. What they call the best, Kinga Fire. And I'll put it this way, our guys kicked their butt. In all rounds, they kicked their butt. So, we took first place and that's a trophy to show it. And I am proud to put that in our station and tell everybody that comes in and asks about it. We kick Kinga Fire's butt. We kick Kinga Fire's and Macbeth's butt. So, I am very proud to tell everybody that walks in that our, our little department out here in Dolan Springs kicked Kinga Fire's butt. So, we did do some talking within the department and Karen and I and thought it would be a good thing to do some more community things with the department. So, we're doing a preparation for a truck retreat for Halloween with the engines and stuff out at the department and a fall harvest for August thirty-first from six to eight P M. More details are going to come for this. But our goal is to create something for the kids in here. I know they have something at the Mormon church up there, a truck retreat, but as long as I've been here, the fire department hasn't been really involved in anything like that. And I think it's, it's a good way to show the community that the fire department is willing to do these things and actually have stuff for the kids to come through and, you know, look at the engines and turn the lights on and all that. So, that's how it works. And that is also during the fire safety week. Fire, and all of October is the Fire, National Fire Prevention Month. So I, we figured that would be a great time with the Halloween holiday to, to do that. Preparation for, we talked about this also, preparation for an organization, winter dinner for employees, families, board members of that for the fire department. Between November and December, we haven't worked out all the details, but we're planning something like that. Appreciations, I think, with those employees in here. As long as I've been here, the, the chief of that has never said, hey, you guys are doing a great job and, you know, bring your families up here and have. So, this is all something, I'm a firm believer in it and we are working on that. Details will come out. And then I just want to also remind that a burn ban is still in effect with the state. So, no burning at all, fire pits, no warning fires, none of that is allowed. And we think they are allowing right now, which I did get word this morning that they are talking about shutting down its barbecue grounds. So, and I know we've been approached this morning by two separate people that came in and want to burn. They said, well, it rained all day yesterday. It doesn't matter. It's, it's still a state burn ban. That's not coming from me. That's not coming from the L M R F D. That's a state where they send it out and say, hey, you cannot burn. You are not allowed to give out burn permits. And that isn't till further notice. So, I wanted to remind you of that. And that's all I have for this month. It was a busy month. We, we had a lot of fire activity and stuff with that, but I definitely want to give the thanks out to volunteers. The volunteers stood up this month and saved their bacon. We kept our, our, our medical personnel in service with the volunteers handling the fireworks.
How many volunteers?
We have right now, I still have three more applications to go through, but we have ten right now.
They all, they all showed up?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was, it was a hundred and twelve we moved today. We did their structure fire and we did manage to get our engines stuck on scene. And we were out there five and a half hours trying to get that engine out. And everyone could stay there and help get that engine. Oh, one last thing on here. It just brought to my attention about the referral update for the administrative assistant for the fit to work. A form has been provided to her. More information is required for than just the documentation that was initially provided. So, I, I provided her with a deadline to return this documentation, which is the end of the month to get the documents. I mean, I mean, that to me was a good timeline to get this done. And then I can return it to the consulting company. The appointment is still ten to twelve weeks out. That's, that's what they're giving me, that's straight from them. There were no changes. I called and there were no changes with the appointment on the timeframe. So we're still, we're looking at that. They're going to contact me with an opening when they have an opening in that timeframe that they can get her in. But I got the impression they scheduled the way she was talking to me, like surgery schedule. And they call one to two days ahead of time and say, hey, this is the opening. Can you, can you get things? But I have, as of that, I have no other information on that to report. This is the update I got, so this is what I'm giving you at this point. And as soon as I know more on the appointment.
Chief. Thank you. Thank you. I think you're doing a great job. I know that my husband and I and our friends and parents went to the fairgrounds on July third. And it just was so neat to see the L M R F D fire truck there, although behind, situated behind Macbeth and Kinga. But nonetheless, I was very impressed with your folks that you had there. There were two employees. One is our new full-time E M T and the other is a part-time guy at Meview, Kenny.
Yes, we have, the three guys that, that ended up moving it for us were Chris Heinz, he's, he's one of our new full-time E M Ts. He's been in the fire service for twenty-two years. He was with Old Valley. He, he's our, one of our new full-time E M Ts. Him, our, one of our volunteers from Meview, Jeffrey.
Yes.
I, I will tell you right now, that kid is amazing. He is so eager to learn. He is there, I mean, even though he lives in Meview, he is. I'm, I'm saying the distance. There's, there's a distance there. He, he called up for anything and he's, he's right there. He's been on all the fires, the accident we had the other morning with the semi-truck that rolled over out of our fire district. Him and Scott responded out there and put that fire out on the semi-truck. And we, we are able. But he, he came from Meview, he's been out there to do that fire. He's, he's very eager to, to learn. He's going to be a great firefighter. But yes, it was Chris Heinz, him, and then one of our P O C medics, Kenny Cannon, that they did.
Please, it was very exciting to watch it. And it was even more exciting to watch it when L M R F D was moving that beer keg over to the wedding side.
I was there and then I got called out on accident on ninety-three, so we have to leave.
Please, please thank them.
I will for sure.
Tell them we appreciate them going and doing that and representing L M R F D. We've never been to anything like that before. And I, I concur with you. I think it's important to get, get our department out there and not only within district, but in other scenarios. I, I know it's not on this chief's report and I know that L M R F D will be at the Mount Tipton School with the teachers tonight, August first, so that'll show up the next one. That's great. I'm, I'm just very, very pleased, very pleased with the direction. How are you getting all these employees?
It's a good question.
Would you argue with him?
Okay, no, okay, no, no, no. Yeah, no.
I've, I've, I've been in the service a long time. I've met a lot of people through the departments I work for and I, I have a reputation, I'll tell you. And it's, that has what's led to people contacting me, pronouncing, and then me contacting people to see if they were working. Yeah, so, I mean, with, with the people we have, like I said, August schedule is completely full and we're twenty-one days covering Meview. And people still calling to work Meview with one day scheduled. So, I mean, it's, it's work in progress, but we're, we're going in a very good direction.
And, and I've been on the board three years now. A lot of years. And I, I think when I was at the station the other day, I met a female, apparently a female firefighter, E M T, or E M C.
Sierra. She's full-time.
She's full-time. That's the first time we've got a female employee in the suppression system. And that was, that was a boost. So, just so everybody knows that we have a range of employees, male, female, we're getting our. We have six slots for full-time. We've got three filled now. We've got a lot of P O Cs, a lot of them are paramedics. More coverage in Meview, that was something I've been fighting for, is more coverage in Meview. And I, I, I can imagine the people in Meview feel finally that they're getting the coverage they deserve and they're paying for it.
Well, well, I know a big thing in Meview is medical. I mean, a, a lot of them, yeah, the, the fire's not as big of an issue, but if you can save a life, that's, that, that makes a big difference. And I know Larry's brought it up before I brought it up. A house can be replaced. Your life can. And, and I am putting seasoned medics up there that have been medics for a long time and that can handle it when they're on film. A helicopter or ambulance gets there. So, that's, that's my concentration, is putting the seasoned veteran medics up there that, that can. So, I mean, they're, they're paying for the service. They, I believe, we need to have the coverage of that. So, I mean, they're paying for the service, they, I believe, need to have the coverage of that.
Since we're talking about Eview, I am talking to the DFW. And their first thing to me is, "We need medical." They discussed it yesterday, I have no idea, but they get a copy of our agenda. And they go over it at their meetings. But that is what probably seventy percent of the people say, "We need medical." And I'm living proof that it works. Because they, even though I deny it to this day, they say, "My wife is wrong." They were right, I needed it for the hospital. And they saved me, or I would not be here today. And I will tell you that they put me in the helicopter, if I'd have been one inch bigger, I'd have been riding outside. But they did the job.
That's great, I'm glad you're getting the coverage in Eview. I know it's been a long time.
And the other thing I want to point out, when we were at this meeting down in Glendale in the warm time of the year. This chief is known by a lot of people. I heard of him, no negatives. He attended all the meetings and then told me, I didn't know what he said. He told me. So I think we're the right person. I'm very proud to call you chief.
Thank you.
John, gee. You've done so much in such a brief time. Thank you. Moving on, financial reports. Oh, we can get it.
I don't know if that's the red box. I don't think the blue lights are on. Just hold the button, the power button down, you should see the light.
Okay, now we can talk.
Do you see it?
You would have to call. You might have to turn the volume up on the red box for the recording.
Chief.
You were to cable.
I'll text you. Hope you want to go to that. As long as he's not there, okay. All righty, moving on, since he's not there. Item six A, discussion of possible action regarding legal counsel invoices and material.
That's mine. We had lengthy discussion with our attorney. And the latest bill that we received, number forty-nine, six-four-nine, which reflects June and a little bit of July. There were no questions that needed to be answered without that bill. So I'm going to make a motion that the LMRFD paid that attorney's bill dated with the account number four-nine, six-four-nine. And the amount of that, Karen, you have that offhand, it's like a thousand dollars.
Thousand fifty-five.
A thousand fifty-five. Need a section.
Need a second, I'll second that. Second, need a vote?
I'm just making. Joe King. Larry Tannen, aye.
Ellen Raybauer, aye.
Charlotte Kipper, aye.
Motion passed, all in favor.
And along with that, the attorney is going to, at no cost to us, review the Mammoth bill we received dated five-sixteen. And provide us with an update about some of the charges related to the EEOC. And I think to make sure we're clear that we're on the same page with the attorney. The meeting of ten, ten eighteen, a special meeting, an executive session. I would make a motion that the administrative assistant transcribe that meeting. So that we are clear on exactly what the attorney told us in that meeting.
Could you make a motion for verbatim?
Transcribe that verbatim, thank you.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Have to say names.
Say your name.
Joe King. Larry Tannen, aye.
Ellen Raybauer, aye.
Charlotte Kipper, aye.
All in favor, please. Yep. Six B, discussion possible action regarding PTO calculation, recalculations for former chief DeMaio. Regarding possible correspondence. The attorney is reviewing state law and Lake Moderna Fire District's policy. And that info he will be providing to our accountant for a final calculation as to what is to be paid or recouped to from Mr. DeMaio. And that will be provided to the board for approval at the August regular meeting. No action. Item six D. Discussion and possible action regarding direction.
We have a portion to letter B.
B? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. This is an extra. I make a motion to authorize Mr. Walter to cut a check to Mr. DeMaio for two thousand sixteen wages. He was underpaid forty-six cents an hour for one year based on, he's got the miscommunication between the administrator at the time and myself. Is to be cut a hard check to be certified mail along with a letter of explanation from the board chair.
Let's see, ma'am. Let's see, ma'am.
If you amount of three hundred thirty-one dollars and four cents.
I second that motion.
Question. The total we are paying is three forty-one?
Three thirty-one, but this is just on the wage.
Okay, but I heard it's...
That was different, that's not a separate issue. This is just on the wage.
Did I understand the attorney was going to look at this and tell us?
That's the other question.
Okay. Now, I know.
We're just confused.
Well, it kept talking about, went back and forth between two or three of them. Attorney talk is always understandable.
So do we have...
So we have a motion.
I second it.
Second, you vote.
We want to pay the three hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Joe King, aye.
Larry Tannen, aye.
Ellen Raybauer, aye.
Charlotte Kipper, aye.
Passed, all in favor. Discussion and possible action regarding board approval of interim fire chief contract. That was no action. Item six D, discussion possible action regarding direction to Chief Bonney regarding interim fire chief contract and board approval for all parties to sign. That is awaiting Chief Bonney's attorney's review. That should happen next week, so we'll revisit this at the August meeting.
Do we need to make a motion, Karen, to approve the contract that was presented to us, subject to changes by his attorney?
You could.
I would make a motion that we approve the contract that's been written. And that the contract will be sent to his attorney, and there could be changes which we will have to address.
I see.
This way he is the fire chief.
Approved on our side.
Yeah.
Joe King, aye.
Larry Tannen, aye.
Ellen Raybauer, aye.
Charlotte Kipper, aye.
Motion passed, all in favor. Item seven D, discussion regarding water tender pump purchase, information certification due to emergency on July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
To avoid any issues with conflict of interest, this was an emergency and was override, so the tender was not out of service. I contacted the board chair and clerk for authorization due to extenuating certain expenses. And I'll let the chief elaborate.
So, water tender for eighteen was, the pump was completely out. It leaked fifteen hundred gallons of water in bay in a matter of like two hours. Why, the crews were out on a call. So we needed a pump for it, especially within the fire season and being one of our main tender, first out tenders. Our Tim Smith mechanic had a brand new pump. Pumps were around eighteen to twenty-six hundred bucks that we get from. He had a brand new one in the box that he said he would sell to the district for five hundred bucks and later put it in. It came out to eight hundred dollars total for the pump. And that's when we contacted the board members and that was approved. So he did come in the next morning, he put that pump in. The rig is now back in service, no leak, and working great.
It saved us a ton of money.
And got us where, we were looking at shipping for almost three to four weeks to get a pump. So that's one of our first out tenders, out for three to four weeks. And he had the example that, it was still, it was brand new, we have the paperwork and everything on it that he had for your job. Whoever did not show up, they did it. That was done and the rig is now in service without any problems.
Good move. No action on that, that's information only. Seven D, discussion and possible action regarding review and possible approval of revised social media personnel policy. Article forty, made the relations.
So I made the relations that were requested, and I kind of also changed a little bit of the format of the policy to make it look more like policy. If the board approves this policy, its inception date would be today, unless otherwise indicated, and we can't go back, but... Are there any questions?
I'm looking to hear, Karen, for the one about, I think it had to do with potential board members or board members, where does that look?
Section three, I want to say.
I see four oh point one.
It's going to be forty point three point six. I put caution against engaging in these acts regarding current and or prospective board members for LMRFD.
Good. And to make note, this not only includes suppression staff administration, but also volunteers for LMRFD. It's here, right here on the top.
Okay.
So Larry and Joe, I don't know, you noted it up here, it also includes volunteers, this policy will have volunteers.
They won't.
Can't have that. I make a motion to adopt this media policy for suppression administrative and volunteers of LMRFD.
Second, then. Do you vote?
Joe King, aye. Larry Tannen, aye.
Ellen Raybauer, aye.
Charlotte Kipper, aye.
Motion passed, all in favor. Item seven C, discussion possible action regarding possible venue change at the LMRFD board meetings. Update of posting locations in Hobbit County. Many changes. I guess that means update the Hobbit County. Review of meeting time scheduled and a possible change.
Dr. Kipper, you might go first?
Please.
So despite an EC unit being donated and installed in the chamber, and in lieu of scheduling issues, our recommendation, staff's recommendation for the board to consider is updating our posting locations and meeting locations to reflect the DSCC going forward. We're asking the board to consider and approve those changes and for staff to also provide notice to the county of such changes. We do have to notify the county that our location itself is going to change and our posting method will.
Do you down here?
Yes, from the chamber.
From two?
We do have two board members who currently serve on the DSCC board. However, let the record reflect, this request is being made from staff for venue change. There is no conflict of interest.
And I'll add a note to that. The DSCC board approved your use of the building for your regular meetings. If that's what this board wanted to do, we'll give you the key so that you can just come and set up when you need to. If it's anything other than your normal meeting, just give us a call and make sure that we is using the hall, it shouldn't be a problem. But this is at no cost to the fire district, so there's no financial gain to the DSCC. And DSCC board felt that this was part of its mandate to meet the needs of the community and provide meeting space for community organizations.
So there's a third part to this. With our scheduling issues with legal counsel, it's, between me and his paralegal, we narrowed down ten-thirty AM is a block on the fourth Mondays of each month. So going forward, if we can also have the approval to set regular session at twelve-thirty.
So are they two separate motions?
You can combine it.
Okay.
So you want to move the rate of meeting till twelve-thirty on the fourth Monday, is that correct?
It's still the same day in a week, it's just a different time.
Wish that there's no conflict, so I can make the motion. I'm not working on that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
As long as there's no conflict, I'll make the motion. That the LMRFD board meetings, is this listening something when it reads?
All bets, that's because your phone's still connected.
Oh, okay.
Her phone's still connected.
So I'll make a motion that the LMRFD meetings take place at the DSCC board's meeting. On fourth Monday of the month at twelve-thirty. And that the county be notified when the county...
The executive session is...
By the executive session's of the attorney. Altering months. Altering months. So I'll second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do you vote?
Joe King, aye. Larry Tannen, aye.
Ellen Raybauer, aye.
Charlotte Kipper, aye.
All in favor, motion passed.
Say you're going to be at the ten thirty.
Okay, Gabe's ready. We'll move the financial reports with Gabe.
Just Gabe.
Hi, Gabe, this is Ellen.
Hi, Ellen.
We're here.
All right.
So, you're going to move the financial report. We are on the financial reports and you can proceed June 2019 financial report.
Governor, I have to share the report. You have the due financial report in your packet. For the month of June, total revenue was eighty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We were fifty-eight thousand over budget. And that variance would do between, split between two things, one, product tax revenue was thirty thousand ahead of budget. And non-legal revenue, specifically ambulance revenue, was twenty-seven thousand dollars ahead of budget. So, and recently the ambulance revenue was because of that non-billing that occurred for a fiscal year. The new building company has filled all of that and now is seeing that collection coming. On the expense side, total expenses per month were twenty-two thousand, sixty-two dollars, which was sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars under budget. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what's the wrong number there? Total expenses per GM were sixty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars, which was eleven thousand under budget. And of our expenses, every line item for the most part was under budget. The only area of significant variance was our liability insurance and that's test due to the time we were paying. Overall, we were under budget for the year on our liability insurance. Looking at the year, total revenue for the past fiscal year was one million, sixty-seven thousand dollars, which was a hundred and thirty thousand over budget. Product tax revenue was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand over budget. And of that hundred and twenty-nine thousand, we actually covered it a hundred and thirty-five thousand of our prior year losses. So, what's good about that, what's bad about that is we didn't plan the margins because that is a part of that taxes of our own district, which means going forward, we'll see more of what we budgeted for revenue, less of the liquidity, which we did obviously budget for liquidity. But I don't think this fits, continue to see this much additional collections in future years as our receivable asset and taxes has increased. Non-legal revenue, given that three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty over budget by eight hundred and forty-five dollars. However, ambulance revenue was actually thirty thousand over budget for the year, we did bring in three hundred and twelve thousand in ambulance revenue. So, we didn't really love the ambulance revenue standpoint. The only reason why our non-legal revenue was so, so close to budget was because there was thirty thousand dollars budgeted in grant revenue that the district did not receive, while they received a thirty-five hundred dollars in it. On the expense side for the year, total expenses were eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, thirty dollars, which was eighty thousand under budget. We do have a few more items that have not come in that we will be recording for last year's expenses, one of them being a legal pre-voice. But overall, we'll be under budget for the year on our expenses. Finally, the last thing I want to point out to the board is we did end the year with five hundred and forty-nine thousand in total cash on hand, which is up five thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars from the prior year. So, we're relatively able to maintain our financial balance. We grew it a little bit with the acquisition of some of those capital assets that were made in this year, specifically the parking lot there. On behalf of the board of presidents.
Gabe, on the year-to-date expenses, could you read those again, they don't match, but we have three now.
Here's the date, for the year I show, I apologize, there is ten thousand, four hundred and two dollars in grant expenses below the line, of which we adjusted seven thousand, and so that's related to that grant revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Gabe, this is Charlotte.
This is Charlotte.
Year-to-date expenses, eight nine four four three two, which is, I thought you said eighteen thousand under budget. My sheet says thirty-eight thousand under budget, which number is correct?
So, both are. One is inclusive of that and the other one is, does not include the grant as part of the budget.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Hey, Gabe, you know, on this income and expense by month chart, you include in there?
Yes.
You can save a whole lot of ink by not breaking that out because it doesn't mean anything in black and white. You kind of lose all the shades and colors in there. If we just, if we just have the percentages over there, that little block, that's the percentages, that would be adequate as far as I'm concerned. Everybody else will figure out those shades of gray.
No, I'm sure they don't.
Long this is not going the other way, I know what it means.
It would just save a lot of ink, I think.
Gabe, this is Charlotte.
Yes.
You're going to find this hard to believe, but I have no questions.
I think I have to.
I think it is too.
I have one other question.
You can mark on your calendar.
Okay, one more question, this is Ellen, how's the paycheck system, is that up and running yet or is it?
So, we are up and running, but we have a, mostly a few, we have things looking to set up and also wealth getting Karen assistance with access. And I think, probably within the next couple of weeks, if we get the system running smoothly, we can transition back over to Karen managing a lot of it. So, I feel that there's, with the controls in place up there, a lot of the turn and regress that we had and things are running smoothly.
Okay, good.
I think the better question is not for the chief than Karen on there, because they talk to the guys, so.
How's it looking for the guys?
We don't have any issues. We're just, we're kind of in limbo until Gabe and I get me in there to get them set up to regularly get their pay stubs.
But you also have any questions?
Do you have time to go to Washington D.C. and fix the Congress so they know how to balance? That's a question.
Don't think anybody can help that.
All right.
Should we keep Gabe on the line for the next one? Is that something we do? So, do we need Gabe to do this?
Well, I think it gives us a very good report and the night of the financial standing, I like the process.
I like it. You knew that. Approximately each month, what's our monthly expenses? Just ballpark, because I'm looking ahead to, we're not going to see any money from people paying their taxes till October. So, our monthly expenses are running about what?
Well, so last year, looking at the year round, I would say our average is about seventy thousand.
Okay.
And it will go up a little bit next year just because of the natural increase in the budget. But, we have added the tax connection under the financial report, we can discuss the line of credit. Just an update from the board that'll actually come to you next month for action. Wealth part of the average approved in districts for two hundred and fifty thousand dollar line of credit. So, I think that is an achievement considering they, because of the policy, six, seven years ago, they've elected not to do business with the district until now. Now, they're having the financial position and where the district is at, so we will be able to move over to wealth part of the justice accounting servicing bank. And that'll be on the agenda next month. But I still don't anticipate the community have money, it's just in place for best practice at this standpoint. But our half million in cash, we have added the front out to your first half taxes.
Very cool, thank you, Gabe.
You're welcome.
I make a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
Larry Tennant, aye.
Ellen Raybauer, aye.
Charlotte Kipper, aye.
Motion pass, financials approved, all in favor.
I agree.
Okay, item 78, discussion, wait, what comes here? D, discussion possible action regarding information regarding possible reallocation of monies, regarding restructure of LMRD employee benefits, wage increases and/or other models of corporate incentives.
I have been asking, do you want me to go first, Stuart? I have been asking what kind of incentives the district can offer to attract full-time employees because that's what we need. And one of the possibilities was looking into, I know in the past, the district, and I'm talking way past, the district may have paid a portion of the, we pay for the employees' health insurance. We pay for the employees' health insurance a hundred percent. And so, in the past, the district used to pay a portion of the family members' health insurance. And so, that was one avenue because, you know, you can't, you can't get a job, a lot of jobs, you don't get health insurance. But, and beyond that, if you do, they don't offer, you have to pay, which is what our employees do, pay for their, their families' health insurance. So, I was inquiring about, well, what would the cost be if we offered, let's say, twenty-five percent or fifty percent or seventy-five percent? Give me a range of what that cost would be for the district to pay for the families of full-time, full-time employees to try and attract people to come and work for us full-time. And Karen, did you have a chance to eyeball that?
Well, I came up with a couple of different options and I briefly spoke to Gabe this morning about it. So, okay, so option one is dental coverage and some of the employees have spoken to the chief and I about interest in dental coverage. If we, if we chose to provide dental coverage for eight employees to the max, it would be about three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars annually. For health insurance at twenty percent dependent coverage, that's going to increase by nineteen thousand, eighty-four dollars. The only problem I have with that is not every employee has dependents, so it's not an all-inclusive benefit to every employee. There's also an idea of, if it's possible, a cost of living at two point eight percent. That would be nine thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars for eight employees roughly. We could do a sick leave incentive. You could offer, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars to each employee every quarter or, you know, twice in the fiscal year if they don't use any sick time. That's kind of where I was at with it.
Full-time is what you're talking about, but it is not work time.
No.
And that dental coverage for full-time up to eight, does that number include eight?
Yes.
So, if I were to, we have right now three full-time, so if I were to, half of that would be roughly seventeen hundred, eighteen, nineteen, we'll say, seventeen hundred bucks for right now dental coverage for.
Well, right now, we have, we have, we'll have five.
We will?
Yes.
Who's not five?
Huh?
Who's not five?
Well, we have full-time, so you have the three full-time suppression, the chief and myself.
Oh, okay.
But, here's, here's the...
Right.
The good side to that. I reached out to our broker and he said the more we have, he's going to reach out again and see if we can't get the rate lower anymore.
Okay, I'm going to my cow, really, because that's a company I don't want to think of, or just doing a major division here. Does that, is that strictly dental or just, I'm sorry, do I have to? Does that include vision or strictly dental?
It's just dental and for those employees with children, there is fifty percent orthodontic coverage on it, I believe. And it does cover basic, basic and, basic is considered here, your regular meetings plus any carryout.
So, if I were calculating five employees at that rate, I'm coming up with twenty-one seventy-one, I'll round it up to twenty-one seventy-two for the year. And if we get additional full-time employees, that could go up. Now, that's just for the employee or does that include family?
That's just employee.
Okay, but, but the employee can buy in and get a reduced rate for their, for their family.
Dental expense is minor compared to health.
But I guess, I guess the key is, and chief, maybe I'm going, I'm going to look to you for this. What do you think it will take to attract more people to come work full-time for us?
Well, it's funny, I said, because I've asked around, I've asked our guys that we have. I've asked guys at other departments. And the biggest thing that our guys right now are saying are, you know, the dental vision they wanted, that they used to have a long time. And then, I brought up, because I gave them, you know, a scenario of these options, which I think most everyone knows, I asked them. And it's, it's wages and benefits, that's, that's, I brought up the, what would, what would they prefer? And it was the cola raises and dental vision, that's, that was the biggest thing.
Gabe, are you still there?
So...
Yes, I am.
Okay, I just want to make sure, thank you.
Karen, Karen showed me this with the dental and the cola raises, which was what, two point eight percent? Cost, total cost is twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven, thirty-six. So, and that's what the two point eight percent rates every, I think they said every January for the cost of living.
So, that's really, that's, that ninety-five twelve is a half a year. Right, if it goes into effect January, or is that, that ninety-five twelve?
No, well, the bureau does their statistics in January.
Right.
So, I know some districts out there have just put at their new fiscal year the two point eight in effect because they couldn't offer to give step increases to a stopping. So, we can't really offer some step increases, but it's kind of like, here's two point eight percent of your wage, thank you. And when we can do better, we can do more, we can provide you more step increases, we will.
So, this would be a year figure, the ninety-five twelve? And this would include all the suppression staff, part-time, full-time administrative staff?
No, this is only full-time.
Only full-time, okay, thank you. Okay, and that includes the chief and that includes the administrative assistant?
So, when, yes, so when I talked to Gabe about it this morning, he said, you know, we just have to look at where do you want to cut or take from. And like I briefly mentioned to Director Kipper, chiefs managed to kind of work around our, his suppression scheduling to where we're not using so much overtime. So, if, yeah, if Gabe wanted to look into that section and maybe he could say, yeah, we've got some money there we can play with.
Right.
Please, he's on the phone.
Oh, great, Gabe, on the phone. So, I like, personally, I like the cost of living raise, I think that would be the most affordable for us this time.
Well, the dental coverage for... Well, the, the dental coverage for right now five employees is twenty-one seventy-one. That's a whole lot less than ninety-five twelve. And if, if it's a benefit like that versus a, a pay increase, you're going to pay taxes on the pay increase. The dental benefit, you're not going to have to pay a tax.
There's frozen cons to each, some people like more, um, wage showing if they're going to, you know, try to go get like a home loan, or.
Right.
A vehicle, or savings account, or pay off debt, whatever the case is. So, that was what we got back from the incentives.
What are we doing for the, the chief? We're, we're paying his health insurance. What happens with his family?
I'm just going to bring that up to the board. Most districts offer their chief a hundred percent with a hundred percent dependent care as a benefit for being a chief officer. That's kind of the norm across the board. And, um, in order to offer that benefit to our chief or future chiefs for LMRD, it's going to be about eighty-two hundred dollars annually.
I'm sorry, how much?
Eighty-two hundred.
Oh, God, you know, I thought I saw eighty-two thousand. I had that stricken look on my face. Okay. So, so our, our magic number man is going to review where we can find some savings um, to take a look at the benefit of eighty-two hundred, I'm presuming he's going to do this. Gabe, tell me if I'm wrong, um, the eighty-two hundred to ensure the chief's family, and whether or not we can come up with money for the dental coverage of right now, five employees is roughly twenty-one seventy-one? Or if we're looking at, um, um, and these are like a menu, the two point eight percent cola raise for this year of ninety-five twelve, is that correct, Gabe?
Yes, when will you want the cola, I mean, back?
Well, what you find out may help us determine when the cola goes into effect. Yeah. And, and, and that, and I, Chief has something he wants to say, but I think it would help if you could, I think it's going to be, and I know Director Cass would be asking this question, where are we getting the money from?
There you go.
So, um, and, and I think we all share that question of where do we get the money from? Uh, so if you could kind of say, well, if we started it September one versus, or we go back to July one, or we do a January one, that might help us make decisions about which way to go with this.
I have two questions. Chief, how many of your full-time firefighters or pyramid have another job that they're receiving benefits from?
Full-timers? Full-timers, none?
They only work ten days a week.
I understand that, but.
Oh, ten days a week.
In the state of Arizona, you can't be collecting benefits from two full-timers.
Okay. Second, is there a possibility of this district going with another district, or another district and getting a better rate? Because there's more money, insurance companies used to do that.
I, actually, I live near to that, and our district is not large enough to do that. Because I know, um, like Peach Springs tried doing that with Kingman and Bullhead, because Kingman, Bullhead, Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley, all them went in on the block. And, um, we're, we're just not big enough to do that.
But we can't go and join them?
No.
The problem is, and I'll be one, we're in the money.
Yes.
The last week, cut some other areas.
Well, and that's why, what Gabe said to me this morning, is, you know, is the board as a whole needs to figure out where they want to kind of cut a little bit from and, and reshift the monies.
That, that may dovetail, um, Director Lieutenant into number E.
I'm just concerned.
Sure.
That we're very thin on budget dollars. And now we're looking at spending round figures, ten, fifteen thousand dollars more. It has to come from somewhere, where does it come from?
Well, Karen's going to look at the overtime issue. We're, we're cutting back on what we had been paying in overtime to see if that's where we could make it up. And we're not deciding anything.
I understand.
So, he can come back and say, you know what, you don't have any money anywhere else? Or he can say, this is how much I see you can save in this line item. And then, based on that number, these are the, these are the ideas you can consider.
I don't mind examining it, but the budget isn't fat.
Right.
Yeah, I personally kind of like to let things stabilize after all of our changes we've done recently. But it doesn't necessarily make any major.
I would like to see it in black and white, I would like to see exactly what we're talking about, dollars and cents.
Right.
And I would like to make, have somebody give me proposals, where this money's coming from, and will it affect that project, or this piece of equipment? Will it affect here or there? If you've got all the benefits, but yet you can't buy gas, we've got a problem.
That's, that's what Sherwood's asking Gabe to, to go through with you. So, that's, that's what we're asking right now. It's not, it's not a first thing that, we're doing this right now, we're asking the account to go through.
I have no problem with getting the information. I know what sort of, but I want to know where it's coming from before we do it.
Okay, so that's just a, just a discussion.
Let's direct the accountant. Uh, I make a motion to direct our accountant to, um, review our budget, and especially in the area of overtime, and see if there's any possible savings that we can apply to any future benefits, for staff to include dental coverage, or, um, certainly the cost for ensuring the chief's, uh, providing health insurance for the chief's family, or two point eight, um, cola. Gabe, did that motion make sense to you?
Yes, it did.
Okay. That's my motion.
So, we're looking at cost of living, the dental, we're not looking at the medical insurance.
For the chief's family?
Just for the chief, but I don't want to increase the, that will attract more full-time employees.
Correct. But that's in line with what districts tend to do, we'll see what we can do. So, I need a second.
Squeeze the budget, one second, squeeze the budget. To see what we come up with for, we're setting for full-time response.
You can vote.
I guess, okay.
Clara?
No.
Ellen, yes, for Gabe, too.
She's getting information. Charlotte Kipper, yes.
So, motion passed, three to one?
I think it's a huge mistake.
We're only getting information through the dentist.
Well, what I understood, you basically want to do it, and this is how we're going to do it. And I would have said, and I believe there should have been a study done, you should have come back with figures, presented them, and then make a decision, and then figure out where we're getting the money.
That's me personally, you're misunderstanding, but they're, they did a motion on to get, for Gabe, to get the information, so we can bring it back to you. We're not making a decision on doing anything right now.
All right. But that isn't the way I understood it, and that's not the way the public's going to understand.
Well, let me clarify, this is to get information, to see what's possible, if any.
Well, then, I would like to amend the motion that they get the information and bring back the figures to us. And then we sit down with the accountant, and we find out, A, what it's going to cost, and B.
You can't amend the motion, that's best.
But I think it's a huge mistake, and I can't sell it.
Yes, we didn't have a second.
I know. It's fine.
That's, that's on board.
Nothing new. My wife worked for the city, and we had to pay for me. Oh, it was reasonable, but we, she had the best, and we had to pay for me.
So, hospital number, business number seven E. Discussion, discussion and possible action regarding fundraising for the district, regarding raised monies allocation, announcement and details of first fundraising event, regarding pancake breakfast for ten thousand. Director Kipper?
I, I think, you know, the question's, where are we going to find the money? Right? We're, we're stuck with our budget. And I, I believe that, that we should make an effort to, the community should make an effort, both communities, Meview and Dolan Springs, should make an effort to have a fundraising campaign for this year. And, the Dolan Springs Community Council is putting on a pancake breakfast for the LMRD. We talked with the chief about, um, we're going to have it at the station. Uh, we can do the cooking there in the kitchen, uh, we can serve it in the bay, put the equipment out of the bay, and, uh, people will eat there. Along with that, during the time of the breakfast, we can have a silent auction, which is a way of people bidding on different items to make money. We can put up, uh, boots, you know how MDA used to do the, the fundraising with the boots, and they go out and they get collections, we can do that at that breakfast? Not to mention other times during the year. All the, all the proceeds that come from that event will go strictly to LMRD. Um, my hope is that during the year, we can encourage other community organizations to do a fundraiser event for the LMRD. Um, I already mentioned that VFW and, and, um, the folks up in Meview, there are organizations up there. We have a VFW and an American Legion down here that I'm hoping to convince to do a fundraiser meal for the LMRD. So, I wanted to, um, propose that we set a goal for this year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, to raise ten thousand dollars. I think we have to have a goal and shoot for it. And that I see the breakfast as being the first event being held for LMRD that will contribute to that goal. So, I guess if anything, uh, what I'm asking the board is to, uh, set a goal, a fundraising goal, for, for LMRD in the amount of ten thousand dollars for this budget year. If we make it, fabulous. If we don't make it, whatever we made was more than what we had before.
Is this going to be for specific groups?
Um, I, I think equipment, uh, turnouts, I know people don't know what turnouts are, so we've got to figure out another phrase, like gear, firefighting.
Get a picture of the whole outfit.
Yeah, then they call.
I like, I like how Joe said it when he was in my office the other day, picking up his board packets, a fire suit.
A fire suit.
That's what he called it, a fire suit.
So, so we can, uh, aim for fire suit and other equipment as needed by LMRD.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, I made a motion that we set a goal of ten thousand dollars to raise for this year for, um, LMRD to purchase fire suits and other equipment as needed.
Well, is that going to be the board doing that, or other?
We're setting a goal, well, we're setting a goal, we're asking other agencies to do it.
A goal?
Yeah, but we as a board need to hold something out there for other people to, to go to the VFW, or to go to the American Legion, or to go up to organizations in Meview and say, oh, really? Fundraising goal.
Are you a cook?
I'm an eater.
So, I have a motion on the floor that we set a goal of ten thousand dollars for fundraising for this, uh, two thousand nineteen, twenty funding year, with the monies raised to go towards fire suits, suits and other equipment, LMRD equipment as needed.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Did you say yes?
No, he didn't say yes.
I did?
I'll say yes. Larry?
Larry, yes. Ellen, Rebaugh, yes.
Charlotte Kipper, yes.
Now, I can tell you about fireman breakfast, you have been big in the building for the ones held in New Grove or Sheridan.
Motion fast.
They generated a lot of money. It was outstanding.
Now, Sherwood, who was my second?
Ellen Rebaugh was.
Are you surprised? There was a lot of money generated.
I like the excellent appointment.
Be careful what you wish for, you might get the whole chicken.
Okay, we're going to move on to call of the board. Discussion. Go, Walt.
Walt Kipper, seventy-two eighty-eight West Nine Street, Dolan Springs. I didn't really think it mattered, uh, but when I saw the chief here today in a light shirt, and, um, kind of skiffed up, it really lent you a sense of professionalism to it. Like I said, I didn't think it mattered, but it wound up mattering. So, I thought that's pretty cool.
Thank you, because that's the first impression I've heard from people, he looks like a chief.
And yes? Okay. So, we're done. Oh, consideration of future agenda items, anybody have anything? Other than the table items that are automatically removed, or anything else you want to add to the agenda?
No.
This time?
Not at this time.
You see if I can make it.
Okay, uh, next regular board meeting will be subject to change.
What is it?
August the twenty-sixth?
I'm going to be here.
And it'll be immediately, time to. So, that is our new time, ten-thirty? It'll be twelve-thirty for the regular meetings. And that'll be at the.
August the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, two-sixth. I might have a conflict that day, uh, and the conflict will be if I don't go, my wife will be using your services for me. Uh, we have to be in Oregon with our grandsons, and we, and so I have a conflict on the twenty-sixth. Because we have to be gone.
So, you want to be available by phone?
I can make that work. That's not a problem, but I just want you to know that I have to be gone. I, I promised her I would do it, and I promised the grandsons.
Paul?
Is that going to be at ten-thirty, Meview?
So, we're going to, uh, I guess it's time to adjourn. I have a.
I have two o'clock.
Two o'clock, straight up.
Do you want to call the board? Do you want to call the board?
Oh, I should. I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
Okay.
Say it.
All in favor on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Clara, Lieutenant?
Aye.
Ray Bauer, aye.
Charlotte Kipper, aye.
Okay, all in favor, uh, meeting adjourned, two o'clock.
We're staying with the same thing. Making the difference.
Are you still editing?
The attorney.
Yeah, I got it. Oh, thanks.